If I could have your attention. I'd like to call the Opelika City Council meeting of February 18th to order. We have a couple of things that we want to take a look at as we get ready to go into the regular meeting. Uh, Mr. Dillon?
Good afternoon. We're asking the council to approve a contract for right-of-way vegetation management. The bid opening day is February 3rd for Opelika Fire Services. The bid was mailed to five vendors, three bids were received. Recommend the contract. We award to ask one as tree expert on their low bid with the specifications on as-needed instances.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have a couple of add-ons, Russell. Uh, the first one that Russell will be passing out is a, um, a suspension report add-on. I think you all have seen this. Any questions? As our council makes this resolution number seven. Okay, I think we have one other. This is a resolution that, uh, Mr. Gunner had prepared that, uh, would, um, if approved, uh, allow the hiring of the firm Fine and Getty as a lobbyist to help us through our quarry issue. Uh, I think you all have, have a chance to take a look at that. So is it the pleasure to council make that resolution number eight? Mr. Mayor?
Quiet over here. Just a moment.
For a moment. Get ready, though.
It's not gonna be quiet for long.
Okay, uh, we'll take a ninety-second break and we'll start at seven o'clock promptly. May I have your attention, please? If I may have your attention. I'd like to call the Opelika City Council meeting of February 18th, 2020 to order. Call roll, please, Mr. Jones.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Mr. Smith-Tate?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here. Uh, we are honored to have, uh, Kevin Flanagan, the director of the Edge Ministry with us. He's gonna make his way to the podium to my right. And as he does that, I'd like to invite Taylor Jackson and Adrian Dawson from Morris Avenue Intermediate School, intermediate school, to make your way up to the front. And if you all would stand, please. Okay, let's pray. Father, we thank you for who you are and who you allow us to be in you. We understand that Opelika has been a light in the world. We acknowledge your blessing in so many areas. Help us to remember that as important as planning and strategizing the future of our great city is, that it's worthless the minute we assume we can accomplish anything without you. Father, a quick glance around the country and the world makes it obvious that allowing our hearts and minds to be steered by you is critical to your sustained blessing. Help us to always remember that our city will be a reflection of our families, and our families are a reflection of the individuals in those families, and the individuals will be a reflection of who and what governs our hearts. We pray that your people will stay involved in our city as we face a Goliath. Let us never forget that your hands, that in your hands, your people slay Goliaths. Father, let us also recognize that a Goliath can be your way to unite us as we look at a common threat. And rather than look to pick battles within our family of Opelika, help us to be united. Keep us united in pursuit of your calling on our lives and your community. Help us to remain alight for you in the darkness. We humbly ask these things in recognition of you and your power and your sovereign love, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, ladies. Thank you, Kevin. You all have previously received a copy of the February 4th, 2020 council meeting minutes. Is there a motion for approval? There are motions, second. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? All in favor of accepting as presented, say goodbye by saying aha.
Aha.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. First, a news flash. Some of y'all may already know this, but Dr. Farrell Seymour just responded, "The Opelika girls won today." Third year in a row we're going to the state tournament. Hazel Green. Let me tell you what, Hazel Green, that's that bunch that sent us home last year in the finals. We got them in the semifinals this year. I think I like it better, Farrell. And, uh, these, uh, these girls are really, really special. So next Wednesday morning, nine o'clock in Birmingham. Mr. President, members of the council, each of you have our January, uh, income and expense. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, Joey, or Cindy Boyd. Joey Motley, our city administrator's here, and I've asked Joey to give the monthly building permit report for January.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm pleased to go over this report tonight. We had thirty new single-family homes for January, and if you look back over the last, several years, that's, that's the most that we've had in the January in a long time. The total permits for the, for the month for January was fourteen million, one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Of that, eight million, one oh eight, seven, sixty-one, twenty-nine was one of those new single-family homes. And that brings our year-to-date total to a hundred and, a hundred and two. So at this pace, and we expect it to pick up with what we've been seeing, is that we'll exceed the last few years, which is continued, good steady continued growth in our housing market, which is a good indicator of what's going on in town. So those, that's all good news. If you have any questions, just give me a call. Thank you.
Thanks, Joey. We have, uh, several folks, and I'm on, I'm on track of moving liberty with the order. Ms. Jones, if you and, and Ms. Pitts will join me down front, and, uh, Jeffrey, if I could fit you and Ramone and Mrs. Harris also to come. Spencer, I'm gonna ask you and Tiffany to take the cover off, too. Come on up, Jeffrey. Where, where Reverend Joe? Come on up. Come on up, Mrs. Harris. Come, Mrs. Harris, come on up. Now, y'all, uh, Tiffany Gibson-Pitts, Mr. Ward, too, council member. But for a number of years, the man that occupied that seat was our colleague Clarence Harris, Jr. Uh, Mr. Harris passed. A number of us went to his services. But one of the last conversations that Clarence and I had is he called me one day, and he said, "I need you to take care of something for me." I said, "Yes, sir." And he said, "Uh, you know, I go out to St. Mark's out on, uh, that's on Andrews Road."
Anderson.
Anderson Road. And, uh, he said, "That, that intersection out there is dangerous." And, uh, I thought he was gonna tell me to put a traffic light out. He said, "Look, I want you to put a four-way stop." I said, "You know what? That's a great idea." So we did. And, uh, then we went ahead and put a flashing light to try to cut down on some of those accidents. So Mrs. Harris and Jeffrey and Ramone, what the city is doing to honor your dead, and I'd like for, and Ms. Jones served...
Thirteen years. We've got a great friend.
And then it's for some fits, now I occupy the boardroom seat. If y'all would take the, uh, cover off so we can, uh, see the sign. Harris Crossroads in memory of Clarence Harris Harris. The signs are already up. My kid, you put them up this afternoon. They're approaching the intersection from all four directions, and, uh, it's something that, uh, we're very happy to do and proud to do. And I asked Reverend Joe if he would come, and, uh, since you were a part of this, making this happen, if you would, uh, maybe say a blessing in memory of not only our friend Clarence, but all those folks, including your members that travel those roads after them.
In their pleasure. Let us bow, let us pray. Our Father and our God, Lord, we come giving you honor, giving you glory, and praising your name on this evening. God, we're so grateful to you, God, for being our God, and thank you for our life. And God, we come now in memory of a great person, Reverend Clarence Harris, Jr. God, we thank you, Lord, for his legacy. God, we thank you, Lord God, for the lives in which he touched. We thank you, God, for the lives that were changed as a result of knowing him. And God, as the crossroads at Anderson and Andrews, God, of their name in his memory. God, we ask your blessings upon every person who come that way. God, we realize, God, that your eyes are in all places at all times. So watch over not only the members of St. Mark's as we go to and from the church, but God knows that go to and from their workplaces in that area, and God also the ones that's just traveling by sightseeing. God, we ask for your protection. We ask for your God. Lord, we ask that you will lead. And we ask, God, that you keep each and every citizen of Opelika safe, not only at Anderson and Andrews, but all roads in this great city and beyond. God, we ask that you will give angel charge over every person, God, under the sounds of my voice. God, that ask, we've traveled these highways, realizing that we don't know what lie ahead, but we know you to be our sustainer. We thank you and we do praise you. It's in Jesus' name we do pray this prayer. Amen.
Come on around up here, Coach. We got here, come on up here. Get everybody. Come on, Brother Joe, can you get in there? Can you see everybody?
I can't see. Here we go. One and two, three. One and two, three.
Thank you so much. We wanna, we wanna honor our retiring city clerk, Bob Schuman. Where did Bob? Oh, come on, Robert. I wasn't sure what President Smith was gonna call you there, Bob, though.
He hesitated, didn't he?
Bob, this is, this is your last, how many council meetings have you been to?
I don't know where. There's two a month, twelve, twelve months in a year. That's nineteen ninety-six. Whatever that adds up to. A lot of council meetings.
Bob, we have...
She's got it figured out.
We've got some of your family here. We've got, uh...
They said they were gonna sit right here and embarrass me.
Well, you got, you got your mom here.
Yeah, Libby Davis.
Libby Davis, you got your, uh, sister.
Rollin.
Rollin.
Silma.
You got Ricky here.
Rick, she needs one. My two granddaughters. Maddie and Lila. Playing with her iPad. They know how to use them better than I do.
Let me tell you something. On behalf of the city council, we want to thank you for your service and for the many years. Now, have you gotten this guy trained, or...
He is doing great. He really is, uh, uh, yeah. Think he'll do great, um, really good.
We're gonna find out on March third. Mr. President, anything you want to address to Mr. Schuman before I present him this framed award?
Yes, Mama Freeman, uh, who is Angie's sister. Angie wasn't able to be with us tonight. Angie is under the weather, but, uh, you know, uh, what do you say about somebody that's been doing this for thirty-one years? There's not been a more dedicated person to the city of Opelika than I know of in my relationship with Bob, and, and our relationship goes way back before I knew anything about city government, and, and he has taught me a whole bunch, and, uh, and I would say thank you, and we will miss you.
I will miss y'all, too. Well, and you know, ironically, folks, done anything to do with this being Bob's last night at a council meeting, but our next council meeting, we're gonna be in our new location down at the municipal courtroom on Martin Luther King. It'd be where the entrance is, and then the entrance is into the courtroom. Chief, everybody, I have to go through the screening devices to get in. So, uh, any of our friends bringing in their weapons, we're gonna need to check them at the door. Except for the police. So this will be our last meeting in this, in this facility, and it serves the city pretty well. A long time ago. Now, you know, Bob, it's not often that I present a framed...
I am honored.
I did. I didn't want to pass it and Tiffany cussing at me. And then plus Ed said he thought I had it in my pocket somewhere. But Bob, uh, I want to present to you a certificate of retirement, even though you don't retire for a few more days. Whereas Robert G. Bob Schuman was born in Honolulu, Hawaii. He was raised in Auburn, graduated from Auburn High School in nineteen sixty-nine. And whereas Bob graduated from Auburn University in nineteen seventy-four with a double major in accounting and finance. And whereas Bob married the former Angie Freeman, June ninth, nineteen seventy-four. Bob and Angie were blessed with two sons. Bobby was born in San Jose, California. Bobby's married to Emily. They have a son, Robert, and a daughter, Elizabeth. Ricky was born in Dallas, Texas. Ricky's married to Kelly, and they have two daughters, Madison and Lydia. Lila, Lila.
Lila.
Lila, excuse me, Lila. Whereas Bob began his professional career with St. Regis Paper Company on June first, nineteen seventy-four, where he worked in nine different cities across the country for ten years, then began his employment with Diversified Products and was there from nineteen eighty-four until nineteen eighty-eight. And he was hired by the city of Opelika as administrative department head on May second, nineteen eighty-eight, and then on October twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-six, he accepted the city clerk's warrant. As mayor of the city of Opelika, I do hereby congratulate Robert G. Bob Schuman on his retirement and express the appreciation and gratitude of the city of Opelika for his thirty-two years of service to our community and wish him the very best as he begins a new chapter in his life. Now, Bob, as a spe- we don't do this very often, but for you, any speeding tickets that you got yesterday, we're, we're gonna allow props. Any needed, I didn't thank you. Thank you, Bob.
It's quite an honor to get it framed, I think, boy. I'm surprised, but it's been my honor all these years, and, uh, and we'll miss you. Put my laptop in here a long time, and I might sure walk with a council meeting over there one day just to watch. Thank you very much.
All right, we, we're gonna save the, we're gonna save the bowls for last, 'cause now we're gonna do the teachers of the year. And Dr. Neighbors, if you would come on down and, and join me, and then, uh, Principal Joe Ross and Lauren Lee from Carver Primary. All right, Mr. Ross, come on up in there. Tell us all about, about this young lady.
This is Lauren Lee. She has been a kindergarten teacher at Carver now for five years. Five years. She has taught fifth grade, I think, fourth grade, third grade, second grade. She's told me she always wanted to teach kindergarten. I never heard that. But she does a fantastic job. She's my team leader for kindergarten, and, uh, she does, she's great. She does a great job to us.
So she is the Carver teacher of...
She is the Carver Primary School teacher of the year.
Hey, I gotta tell y'all something about Mr. Ross. Dr. Neighbors, I was trying to get the star ID on the driver's license. I go after this thing. Obviously, I look like Ned the First Primmer, and I'd like somebody to come to that little half-door and ask anything, "Help." Well, this lady sitting out there says, "Mayor, you need to look at that thing over to your left. Well, there's a box over there." I said, "Well, I'm half stupid, and I don't see where it says star ID." She said, "Let me, let me help." It was Mr. Ross's wife. I got her a number and got in there. I couldn't read, I couldn't read the thing. Had to go buy me a pair of glasses. I appreciate your, uh, thanks, Mr. Ross. Stay up here, Dr. Neighbors. Uh, junior primary, Mary Fleming, and Principal Davis, Carver.
Mary unfortunately has the flu.
Oh!
Yes, sir. Uh, Mary was sent home today with the flu, and, uh, regrettably, she was not able to hear, but she did, she was looking forward. Sure. Well, she's well-received by all of her colleagues. I remember the day that I hired her, I had the pleasure of hiring her three years ago, and I said, you know, "Mayor, I want you to be coachable. I want you to work hard, and I want you to serve others well." And those three characteristics certainly represent Mary, and, uh, I believe that's why her colleagues chose her for teacher of the year.
Tell, we missed.
I will. Thank you.
All right, listen, Southview Primary, Amy Blackburn and Mary South. Hey, Mayor. How are you? How are you? Mayor, tell us about this great teacher.
Okay, so this is, um, Amy's an Opelika graduate, first of all, OHS. No, hey. And she has been in our school system for fifteen years. She spent five years in special education and has spent the past ten in kindergarten, which in itself is impressive. But thanks, when I think about Amy, she is a leader on a grade level. She has a great rapport with parents, and she is great at transitioning kids from pre-k and preschool into kindergarten. She teaches them independence, problem-solving, character-building, and she does it all with a fun and engaging classroom. And so, um, we're very lucky to have her as our teacher of the year.
And Dr. Neighbors, when all of these, I'm gonna get you, talk about all of them.
All of them?
Yeah.
I bet I'm just one o'clock.
Principal Nino Mason and Kelly Kane. Kelly Kane. Mason, tell us about this great teacher.
Uh, Ms. Kane is a fourth-grade teacher at Morris Avenue Intermediate School. She's been working there the past six years. She taught a third grade for one year. In the past five years, she has taught fourth grade. She collaborates well with her team, and she's passionate about teaching and student learning. Please join us, uh, Ms. Kelly Kane, Morris Avenue.
West Forest Intermediate, uh, Dr. Pam Fortberry and Cindy... Hello, Cindy?
Yeah. Thank you. How are you?
Uh, Fortberry, tell us about this great teacher.
She is a great teacher. This is Cindy Henkel, everyone, and she's a fourth-grade teacher. She graduated from Opelika High School in two thousand thirteen. She's worked in my after-school program, and she's also worked at Covington Red. She's a graduate of Troy University, and she is absolutely awesome, and she loves the West Forest students. So it's a pleasure to introduce Miss Cindy Henkel, uh, West Forest teacher.
All right, everybody look pretty at the camera.
Thank you.
From Opelika Middle School, Keith York, Mr. York, and Karen Burnett.
Oh, the final middle school.
Keith York, did you tell us about this great teacher?
It is my pleasure to introduce you to Karen Burnett. She teaches sixth grade for us at Opelika Middle School, and she's an eighteen-year veteran, and we've been blessed to have her with us for the past eight years. She has a great rapport with her students, does a fantastic job. She also coaches our cross-country team, and she serves as our sixth-grade math department chair. Does an outstanding job.
Cindy, come on.
She's here? Yes, sir.
Come on down here, Cindy, come on. You, you gotta take this, Daniel.
Yes, she was not at home.
Rose, Rose, sir. Amy Rose, sir.
Hi, how are you?
Oh, good. How are you?
I know your husband's...
He's here.
Yeah, I'm hugging all her breasts. Tell us about this great teacher.
Miss Rose is an intern at Northside back in two thousand and ten and has continued teaching at our school. The best way to describe Miss Rose is whenever we have a, a conversation with a teacher, we kind of brainstorming what to do, how, she's the first person to say, "What if this works?" She doesn't come up with the obstacle, and that's just lovely to me, to have somebody that has that vision. So we appreciate it, and we're very proud of her. Um, I, to be honest, she just came this morning and told me she had a prior engagement she was not able to change, so she tried very hard.
I hope she's well.
Yes, she is. I hope so, because she hasn't put in Kelly's services yet. So she needs to, thank you so much.
Edwards and Dr. Farrell Seymour.
veteran teacher of fourteen years in total, and she teaches a number of business classes, including marketing for preparedness, and most recently our Ready to Work Program, which is innovative and new this year, and Mayor Fuller, you've spoken to this class as well. Um, additionally, she's our sponsor for Future Business Leaders of America and our award-winning robotics program, so, uh, additionally, she serves as our department chair for career tech, so wears a lot of hats, a warm and inviting teacher, high level of standard, and just an outstanding teacher in person, Mandy Edwards.
Well, I'm sorry, I left my notes at home. Well, Dr. Neighbors, listen, we are so proud of our schools and of our teachers and administrators, but you know, it takes a great superintendent, it takes a great school board.
Community.
And a community to do this, and, uh, I know you gotta be proud of what's going on.
We're always proud, we're always proud, and thanks for your support, because I wanna get on to you and talk to people, our, our teachers and other folks, young superintendents, and actually board members from other places call, I talk about if you're not unified as a community, you know, even my parents, I love them to death, but we don't always agree on every little thing, but you work through those things, and, uh, so I'll be honored and privileged to be here for, be close to thirty years, but it's about good people and good environments, and we hope that we create that for children, our folks to be able to, until we come to work every day.
Thank you. And Dr. Neighbors, I noticed there's not a male superintendent here.
Yes. Step the camera.
All right, into the goal, Matt, Matt Battles, come on up here and set the stage for everybody, and. Matt Battles is the, uh, head of some area managers, and, uh, Matt, we've got several folks that you're gonna interview.
Sherry James, Martha, and. All right, let me give you, before we, uh, check, it's a secret, a lot of people. Uh, we, you know, we, we couldn't do this fundraiser without the help of, uh, first and foremost, Sherry and her leadership in the fire department over there, and then there's countless potters who spend hours and hours and hours throwing bowls, uh, prepping the site for, uh, for hundreds of people to come through, and, uh, it's really a great event, and, uh, so, thanks to the fire members first and foremost, uh, Lee County Master Gardeners help out every year, uh, Boystow Tree P-58, and then a couple of businesses, uh, Rex Nord, uh, with a very nice donation to kick us off, the Beard Family, then Cafe One Twenty-three, Niffers on the Tracks, and Bow and Arrow all provided soup all day long for the event, and then, uh, there's two people that really were instrumental, uh, in the, uh, beginning and all the way through the event, uh, and Sherry has a couple of, uh, plaques for them, so first, we got Clay Wilford, um, this man, he doesn't work there, but you thought he did, uh, he pushed sales for the bowls beyond our expectations, he showed up in the cold at Raindeer Express and, and, uh, really sold, uh, bowls and told people about the program, and that really got people into see what Opelika's Potter Department really is, um, and then we got Kitty Green, is the, uh, she was the publicity chair, she organized the auction, the raffle, social media, the food donations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, Kitty is, uh, she's done a great job, and, uh, we really couldn't do anything without you and your help, and, uh, and Sherry, Sherry's very few words, so.
She just works.
That's right, so anyway, so let me give you a little history real quick, empty bowls were started, uh, nationwide years ago, but then Opelika started with Sherry and a few potters back in twenty fourteen, and then we co-hosted with Auburn every other year, so in twenty fourteen, we were able to raise fifty-five hundred dollars, twenty sixteen, thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, twenty eighteen, we jumped up to, uh, eighteen thousand dollars, so, Ms. Martha, you can break me on this, that's seven mils for every dollar, right? So, since twenty fourteen, we've helped provide two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five mils.
Wow.
Now, I'm about to blow your mind, so, this year, we're very proud to present a check to the food bank for twenty-one thousand.
Wow.
So, for a, uh, a total for the five years that we've hosted it, that's, uh, fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars or four hundred thousand seven hundred and ninety-five mils.
Wow. Martha, you, you've come into that.
Oh, it's just absolutely amazing, when you think about all of the effort, all of those different hands, each bowl at a time, it's just amazing, what a simple thing, you know, and I, I keep a bowl on my desk at work from the empty bowls, and it just reminds me that there are people in our community that have bowls that are empty that need filling, but it also reminds me that there's something that can be done about it, and look what these folks have done, it, that's, that's amazing, it was just amazing, very grateful.
Great, uh, thank you, Matt, thank you, thank you. Ready, one, two, three, one, two, three.
You'd want to mention, I have two board members with me, too, Judy Jones and Janet Johnson, two of my former peers.
to the council or the mayor, please come up here to my right, make sure you sign in on the sign-in sheet so that I can get in touch with you if we need to, please keep your comments, five minutes or less, and also, we do, I want to make sure that you know, if you're here for the public hearing, now is not the time to speak, you'll speak during the public hearing, thank you.
General business, Mr. President, Mr. Jones.
Uh, first order of general business, Mr. President, is a request for the annual American Cancer Society Relay for Life on Friday, four seventeen, twenty.
Is there a motion for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. Next thing is our public hearing to amend zoning ordinance and map R-one to PUD, one hundred and fifty acres, twenty fifteen, south of Your Oil Road.
I declare this public hearing open, anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time. Have no one I declare public hearing closed. Be it, Ms. Cannon?
We asked the council to approve a contract for wideway vegetation management, the bid opening date was February the third, Opelika Power Services, the bid was mailed to five vendors, reviews were received, recommend the contract be awarded as one tree expert, only a low bid, be specifications on a as immediate basis.
Is there a motion for approval?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon.
Resolution, Mr. President?
Mr. President, the first resolution ratifies, um, emergency repairs and upgrades to, uh, a transformer in Substation Six, um, the contractor in this instance was Service Electric Company, and the total estimated cost of the repairs and upgrades was thirty-four thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The, uh, second resolution authorizes the Opelika Police Department to purchase two drones from Vector Solutions at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars, and, uh, the majority of this expenditure will be reimbursed by Burn Justice Assistance Grant.
Is there a motion for approval?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The third resolution authorizes the, uh, Information Technology Department to enter into a three-year contract, uh, with Verona Software, uh, with, I'm sorry, with CDW Government E for, uh, Verona Software and Maintenance, and, uh, this, uh, total cost will be spread out over three years, and the total invoiced amount will be one hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Is there a motion for approval?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number five authorizes the, uh, Environmental Services Department to partner with the city of Auburn, Lee County, and Auburn University to secure a, uh, a grant for recycling.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number six authorizes a special appropriation to Keep Opelika Beautiful in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to sponsor the Keep Opelika Garden in the Park event.
Is there a motion for approval?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number six authorizes a special appropriation to Keep Opelika Beautiful in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to sponsor the Keep Opelika Garden in the Park event.
Is there a motion for approval?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number seven approves a travel expense report submitted by John Swetman of the Economic Development Department.
Is there a motion for approval?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number eight authorizes the city to enter into an agreement with Fine Getty and Associates, uh, for governmental relations, representation, and procurement assistance.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you, ordinances, Mr. Gunnar?
Mr. President, the first ordinance is before the council for second reading, it comes to the council with, uh, recommendation, a positive recommendation of the Opelika Planning Commission, if adopted, this ordinance will rezone, uh, thirty-two point four-five acres, uh, located, uh, on the southeastern side of Gateway Drive at Interstate Eighty-Five from, uh, uh, to a PUD, uh, which is a, uh, planned unit development district, uh, this will be a mixed, uh, commercial use, just, uh, development consisting of restaurants, retail stores, and a, uh, fuel, uh, and a fuel station there, and, uh, there are several, uh, as a condition for the development, there are several, uh, conditions that are on page two, and they are that the truck fueling station will only have six stalls for truck fueling, and ten spaces for truck parking, that the proposed freestanding sign will conform to the maximum area and height requirements of the city, that the applicant will partner with the city to make infrastructure improvements to Gateway Drive and other infrastructure to mitigate traffic congestion, that the applicant will provide twenty-four hour security monitoring, uh, monitoring truck parking, ensuring trucks are parked in a stall space for a maximum of one hour, that all buildings will meet the Gateway Corridor overlay, uh, cladding, and including support poles for passenger fueling, canopy, and landscaping requirements, and, uh, will provide access easement for future streets to the Ward property to the northeast.
Is there a motion to approve the rezoning of the thirty-two point four-five acres?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The second ordinance is also before the council for second reading, this, uh, ordinance authorizes the city to sell, uh, a lot, uh, which is Lot Forty-three of Tumor Street Project, uh, being, uh, fifteen oh six Harper Street, uh, to Hometown Properties LLC at the appraised sum of eight thousand dollars.
I believe there is a desire to, uh, table this, uh, ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Jones, move, makes a motion to table, is there a second?
A second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
To table.
All right, the, uh, third ordinance is a, is an ordinance that, uh, provides for the election of municipal officers, the election date is August twenty-fifth, the runoff, if necessary, is October thirteenth, and qualifications for mayor and council members will run from July seventh to July twenty-first.
Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Send it.
Is there a motion, a second, is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
And the, uh, fourth ordinance, uh, was the subject of a public hearing this evening, this is an ordinance to rezone, uh, one hundred and fifty acres from R-one to planned unit development, uh, this will be known as the Drake's Landing, uh, Planned Unit Development.
I ask for the members of the council to introduce this ordinance, my pleasure, Mr. Cannon, thank you for doing so, uh, we do have some, um, appointments, or I should say, reappointments, uh, the first one is to, uh, the first three are reappointments of Opelika Industries Development Board, the first one is Mr. David Skye, in turn that. The first one is Mr. David Scott, a term that would end March the eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Scott?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The second one is to reappoint Mr. Steve Bordeaux for a term that would also end March the eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Bordeaux?
Move to reappoint.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
And the third, uh, reappointment for the OIDA Board is Mr. Steve Chapman for also a term that would end March the eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Chapman?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
And then finally, uh, we have, uh, Mr. Brent Potte to, uh, a reappointment at the Property Maintenance Board for a term that would end March the sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Potte?
Seven.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, call roll, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.